Trustee Marcia Milchacher, read any actions taken in closed session.
There were no actions taken.
All right, so no actions were taken. And we'll now move to the invocation to be led by Trustee Marcia Milchacher and followed by the pledge by Trustee Mike Meldow.
Tonight, we ask God's help in making decisions that will assist our incredible staff to benefit close to 50,000 students who live in over 31 cities, communities, and school districts and that our district serves. Every student's success is important to each of us in the room, and to everyone who serves in our district, we thank all of you for that. Robert Louis Stevenson helps us to understand the true meaning of success. To laugh often and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, to earn the appreciation of honest critics and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a better place, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition, to know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived. This is to have succeeded. Amen.
Very good. Trustee Meldow.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have a number of resolutions, and I'm going to ask that the presidents of the colleges where these are going to be, the people honored, come forward to the podium to help us with the resolutions. Trustee Milchacher will read the resolutions.
First, the first resolution is for Chris Lepine Christensen, the Saddleback College Professor of the Year. I'll wait till you get there.
Are you doing?
Whereas, you there? You there? Chris is there, and the president of the college is there. Whereas Dr. Chris Lepine Christensen, a psychology instructor whose students described him as amazing, approachable, and inspiring, has served with great distinction to teaching excellence at Saddleback College since 2005. And whereas Dr. Chris Lepine Christensen challenges his students to pursue their passions, explore their intellectual growth, often inspiring his students to follow in his footsteps and to pursue doctoral degrees in psychology. And whereas Dr. Chris Lepine Christensen was a nominee for the 2012 Orange County Teacher of the Year Award, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Dr. Chris Lepine Christensen for his outstanding dedication to his students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's 2010-2011 Professor of the Year. Can we have the roll call for that, please?
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Pepper.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this honor. I truly appreciate it. I, like many of the faculty here, are very honored to work for the district, and we appreciate the support that you provide to us. The technology support in the classroom, support of our curriculum changes and whatnot are very much, I'm in gratitude for that. Thank you.
Do you have any family here you would like to introduce?
I do not, because I was not aware that the resolution was being presented tonight. So, I had a canceled dinner with my mom for her birthday, but I think she'll understand. I think she'll understand when I show her the resolution. Yeah, I think she'll appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for all you do for our Saddleback College students.
Our next.
A picture first?
Oh, first we're taking a picture for our records. And the next one is Teresa Bear, the Saddleback College 2010-2011 Associate Professor of the Year. This is one of my favorite evenings of the whole year when we honor our Professors of the Year, because we have such fabulous professors, it really is difficult to choose the best. And this is why our colleges are so great, because our Professors of the Year, because we're great professors. Okay. Whereas Teresa Bear, an alumna of Saddleback College and chemistry instructor at the college since 2007, was named Saddleback College's Associate Professor of the Year and since has become full-time tenure-track faculty. And whereas Teresa Bear's students rave about her energy and passion for her subject and say that the hard work required to meet her high standards has inspired them to be intrigued by chemistry, as she is, and many of her students who once feared chemistry changed their majors to the subject. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Teresa Bear for her outstanding dedication to her students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's 2010-2011 Associate Professor of the Year. So, congratulations. And I know Professor Teresa Bear from many, many years ago. We just reconnected after many years. So, sincere congratulations for this. Thank you.
Can we call the roll?
Now, let's do the roll call.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Pepper.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Do you have any family to introduce?
Again, I was not made aware of this until about 10 o'clock this morning, when Dr. Wright came down to my lab, and I had to rearrange my plans this evening, too. So, unfortunately, no. But I am here supported by my amazing dean, Dr. Wright, and my other huge supporter in the department, Sherry, Sarah Shabani. So, but I just want to thank you. This has been such an honor for me, as Marcia alluded to. I grew up in this community. I've been here since elementary school, high school. Went to Saddleback. My mom graduated from the nursing program here. All of my siblings attended Saddleback College, went to UCI. I just love this community. I love this college. It just changed the course of my life. And for me to be a, so, I live in Oceanside, but I drove up here since 2007, because this is where I wanted to teach. And when I was offered the tenure-track position, it's just kind of come full circle, and I am literally teaching in the same classroom that I took my first chemistry course in. And every day I walk on this campus, my heart beats fast, and I know this is where I belong. And I'm so thankful for the opportunity. Every day I literally walk away from my classroom saying, "I can't believe I got a paycheck for that." And I just love being here. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to the next, hopefully, 20, 25 years in the department. So, thank you very much.
Just want to say that my son and your brother were really good friends at Laguna Hills High School, but I didn't even know that you were hired until you came up to me and said, "I've been hired." So, I had nothing to do with you being hired, okay? Just wanted to set the record clear. But I'm delighted. Thank you.
Next resolution is.
Next for Kay Ferguson-Ryles, Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Professor of the Year. Whereas Kay Ferguson-Ryles joined Irvine Valley College as an adjunct instructor in English in 1996, becoming a full-time faculty member in 2004, and is known for her informal teaching style that fosters a safe atmosphere for students to question, learn, and share. And whereas Kay Ferguson-Ryles' dedication extends to the IVC Honors Program, where she develops opportunities for IVC honors students to engage in competitive and award-winning research conferences with other regional and state colleges and universities. And whereas Kay Ferguson-Ryles is a finalist for the 2012 Teacher of the Year Award, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Professor Kay Ferguson-Ryles for her outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by the students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Full-Time Professor of the Year. And now, let's have the resolution. Can you read the resolution, please?
Roll call.
That is the resolution.
Yeah, that was the resolution.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Pepper.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It's a great honor to be here, and it doesn't feel quite right to be singled out when I'm around such great colleagues at Irvine Valley College. But it's a real privilege, and I want to thank the trustees and my college. It's a great place to teach. I have been teaching there for a while. I was lucky enough to be at IVC as an adjunct and now as full-time, and I love it and feel very, very fortunate. It's great students, great support for faculty, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it very much. And my daughter's not here. She's home doing her ninth-grade English homework. So, but she's thinking about me, I know. So, thank you very much.
I just have to say, I think it's wonderful when we have part-time faculty members that are promoted to full-time, because then we really can see how well they do in the classroom. So, we know for sure they're great teachers. So, really, it pleases me. Okay. David Lacy, Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Part-Time Professor of the Year is next. Whereas David Lacy, an English instructor, joined Irvine Valley College as an adjunct faculty member in 2008 and quickly became known for creating an atmosphere in the classroom that is interactive, inviting, caring, and positive, earning him the respect of colleagues and students alike. And whereas David Lacy has served Irvine Valley College with great distinction since 2008, introducing students to the art of writing well by bringing his past experiences and award-winning newspaper reporter and columnist for the Davis Enterprise into the classroom. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate David Lacy for his outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Part-Time Professor of the Year. And now, the roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm a little bit nervous. Thank you to the board, even the student member who called me buddy and patted me on the back when I walked in. Thank you to my department, to the chairs, Bill and Kurt, and former chair Lewis, who was there when I was hired, and to my colleagues Kay and Richard, who are also being honored tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, our last resolution today, last but not least, is for Richard Carmania, the Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Emeritus Professor of the Year. Wait till you get up there. Whereas, what? Whereas Richard Carmania has been a true inspiration to his students since 2005, passionately teaching Tai Chi Chuan classes through the IVC Emeritus Institute, after having spent several years volunteering in the classroom of a master teacher of the discipline and studying under some of the greatest Tai Chi masters in the world. Whereas Richard Carmania grew his classes from 30 students to 90 students, and his students describe him as caring, dedicated, kind, patient, respectful, and encouraging, as he builds their confidence through supportive and gentle instruction. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Richard Carmania for his outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2010-2011 Emeritus Professor of the Year. Now, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very much. I must say that years ago, I didn't think that I would ever be receiving this honor. I started teaching in the '50s, and mostly music and art through that time. Retired in '94 and began studying this other art. Understand that Tai Chi is more health, is what we're teaching, physical education for those lifelong learners. And thank you all very much for continuing to understand that they deserve that education, too. Thank you also to Dave Anderson, that supports all of us at the Emeritus and keeps us really fired up. Thank you.
And thank you for allowing 90 students in your class.
All right. We are now at public comments, and we have two speakers. And Catherine Doe, your comments are limited to two minutes. Ms. Doe?
I'd just like to follow up on the last board meeting. I was here two years ago when they were recruiting recruiters for the chancellor's position. And this is a position that I'm still interested in. And my background is, I'll read it as quickly as possible. I'm an experienced entrepreneur and small business owner who was running for a city council seat in Laguna Beach in November 2012. Former registered investment advisor with Series VII license, insurance license, commodities license, and options qualified. Board of Directors, International Association of Financial Planning Chicago chapter, broke the glass ceiling for women as investment brokers and financial planners in the 1970s. Pioneering family in the U.S. at Jamestown, Virginia, 1607, John Doe, Thomas Doe, and Nicholas Doe, descended from European royalty. Study and travel abroad, Europe, Middle East, and North Africa, in Chicago. Participation in such groups as International Visitor Center, Council on Foreign Relations, Wedgewood Society Episcopal Singletons, board member and vice president, contemporary concerts. Pioneering family in California and the establishment of the University of California system, beginning with the first of 10 campuses at UC Berkeley. Now, recently, I tried to register for two weeks, nearly every day, and failed for the film and broadcasting curriculum for credit. Now, this has gone on for a long period of time here, and I have prepared a lawsuit that will be filed. Thank you.
And now, we have the honor of recognizing Assemblyman Don Wagner. And he sat in this very seat on this board until he was elected to the assembly. Welcome back.
Thank you, Nancy. And it's very nice to be back for what I hope is a bit of a special occasion. I know I've only got two minutes, so I'll try to speak fast as well.
We'll cut you a little slack, maybe.
No, I might be able to do it. When I was heading up to Sacramento to do some lobbying on behalf of this district several years ago, I found myself in a airport at a gate waiting for the plane, and who should sit down next to me but Bill Hewitt? Now, Bill and I knew each other a little bit from our respective experiences at the college district, but didn't really know each other very well. And in the course of that conversation and the plane ride up to Sacramento, we found there was a lot to agree on, there was a lot to disagree on, and there was a lot of area for further discussion. We have continued those discussions, and I am happy to report that from that, a valuable to me at least, a very valuable friendship developed. And when I heard that Professor Hewitt was retiring, I thought, "Well, I ought to put together a certificate of recognition because of all the good work that I know he's done." And then I started looking into the good work that he has done and found that I only knew bits and pieces, had only scratched the surface. And so, when I found out some more detail, I actually had the state legislature put together a resolution honoring Bill for his service, not just to IVC, but to community college students throughout the state. There's a lot on here I didn't know, maybe some of you also didn't know it. Professor Hewitt has been instrumental in the development and implementation of several legislative initiatives, going back all the way to 1976, serving disabled, disadvantaged, and disenfranchised students. He was dean of student government in the 1980s and advisor to the statewide student senate. In his capacity as director of supportive services at IVC, he has overseen, well, I can't even begin to list all of the programs that Professor Hewitt has overseen. He was awarded the National 2005 Achievement of Excellence Award by the American Association of Community Colleges. The bottom line, my friend, is you know what he has done for IVC. Some of you were on the board when he was serving FAC up in Sacramento and know perhaps what he's done a little bit in the state. I have been privileged to learn what my good friend Bill Hewitt has done in this state and indeed throughout the nation. That said, I will wrap up and tell you, the real legacy is not in this and what has been done and the awards that Bill can hang on his wall, but will be in the literally thousands and literally generations of students who have benefited from his work here and especially at the state level. And so, I wanted to take a moment to present this in full view of all of you and to say, on behalf of the people of the state of California, Professor Hewitt, thank you so much for your service to the community colleges and to our students. He has his family here, and he didn't fill out one of those forms, but Madam President, if you would indulge.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I just am pleased that this is a resolution we don't have to vote on. Thank you.
No, the state's already voted on it. Thank you, though. I'd just like to say how much I appreciate this. I've spent 38 years in the community college system. I feel like I've made some significant contributions, but I want to acknowledge two things, and that is the staff that I had to work with. I've had the most wonderful staff and the most wonderful support from administration, from the board. I know most of you well. And it's been a pleasure. It's been a wonderful journey. And the staff that was so dedicated in making all this happen, it's not about the programs that you develop, it's not about the legislation that you're involved with writing, it's not about being president of the academic center. It truly is, at the end of the day, have you made somebody's life a better life and given them an opportunity to succeed? And I feel like that's my legacy. I'd like to introduce, real quickly, my wife, who most of you know, Pam. And my son, who many of you don't know, Gary. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for the brief moments. I appreciate that a lot.
I do think we need a photo op, including everybody up there. So, if you could just get together there so that Ms. Flugerman could do that, we appreciate it.
How's that? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Assemblyman Wagner, for coming back. You're welcome anytime. All right. We are now at board reports, and we'll start with Trustee Jay.
I love our reports this evening.
All right. Trustee Meldow.
Yes, I've just been having a wonderful.
Could you turn your mic on? Yeah.
Hello?
Uh-huh. Push it. It should be on. Go ahead.
Now?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. I've just been having a wonderful time. First of all, I'd like to thank President Burnett for taking me on a great tour the other day of Saddleback College, although he did kind of take me mainly into the bowels of the building. And one thing I learned was that we really have to pay attention to our ongoing maintenance. So, thank you very much, President Burnett, and I look forward to seeing President Rockmore in about a week and a half. So, other than that, we had a terrific football game on Saturday at the Saddleback Homecoming. It was a great game, and everybody had a tremendous time. Also, I enjoyed very much the opening of the art exhibit at IVC. Terrific, terrific opening. The Chili Bowl Cook-Off was great despite the fact that we didn't have any electricity. But we had a good time, and I ate a lot of chili. And so, things are just going quite well. Thank you.
And Trustee Milchacher.
Hi. I just have one comment to make.
Put your mic on, please. Push your mic.
I just had one comment to make. I joined Trustee Meldow at the Chili Cook-Off, and there was no electricity that night, so it was very few people there, but the chili was wonderful, and I bought a lot of things. I really helped support the organization immensely. So, and all the money goes to the Veterans Memorial, and veterans and their families. So, it was a good cause, so I felt really good about it.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of tag along on the sentiment about the Homecoming game. It was nice to be able to leave when we had a nice, comfortable lead in the fourth quarter, invoke the mercy rule on our own there. Nice job. And thank you very much for inviting us to the reception. That was a really nice venue to be able to watch the game from and then enjoy that. I will be going to the water polo game on Wednesday to check out the new aquatics facility renovation, and hopefully we'll get some inspiration from that to win the game.
Okay, great. And I'll give just a brief report. Of course, I went to the Homecoming game as well, and it was wonderful. And I just want to comment about both of our colleges, having wonderful 9/11 ceremonies. I attended both. And the 9/11 ceremony at Saddleback was just before the power outage, or actually, I guess it happened right. Right. So, it was a challenge, but, you know, it was an experience. But both of them were very well-received and very respectful. Really appreciate the colleges doing that. Saddleback had a Constitution Day that one of our foundation members helped organize, Joyce Vancheck. She's not here tonight, but it was wonderful. Big article in the paper. And they also had an Extreme Entrepreneurship Tour at Saddleback, and I believe that also made the paper. So, those were very nice things. Okay. Next, Trustee Lynn.
Yes, I also wanted to thank President Rockmore for a wonderful September 11th commemoration. Apologies to President Burnett for not making it to your ceremony, but I'm sure it was also a great event. But I do thank you for hosting the Saddleback Homecoming. That was a nice evening and a good one for the team. Thank you.
Student trustee Larson.
Well.
Is your mic on? Push your mic.
All right. Well, I attended the Homecoming game, and as it turns out, I won Homecoming King.
Oh, my goodness! Wow! I suppose we should bow.
So, the winner receives $150 to donate for a club of their choice. As it turns out, I am the president of the Saddleback Chess Club, so.
Because that's where it's going to go.
So, hopefully, we can get some new chess boards for the students, and I'll get back to you on that. Secondly, I've attended many water polo games. Unfortunately, we haven't been too successful, but I will be there on Wednesday, so hopefully me and Trustee Prendergast can root the team on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Chancellor's report.
On the agenda tonight, there are two items. Number one is the accreditation follow-up report, item 4.1, and the other is strategic plan, item 6.1. And these items together represent a And these items together represent a very huge effort on the part of a lot of people in this district. Many of them are in this room, but if you look at the reports, you'll see long lists of people that participated and spent a lot of time on both of these projects. And I want to thank them for all of their work. We would not be in the position we are today if it hadn't been for the great amount of collegiality and cooperation that we had. Thank you all.
Okay. Do we have any board requests for reports? Okay, seeing none, we are now at the discussion item. But before we start that, President, would you just wait just a minute? We are going to advance the consent calendar so that we can have 4.1 and 6.1 come together because they're so related. So, we will go to the consent calendar and then come back to 4.1. Are there any items to be pulled off of the consent calendar? Okay. See...
I move the item.
All right. It's been moved by Trustee Jay, seconded by Trustee Lang, and no items to be pulled, so let's vote for the consent calendar. Okay. And it carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory vote. Now, we will go to 4.1.
First off, I'd like to say it's my pleasure to open up this discussion on our accreditation follow-up report. And my first line of duty here is to introduce the team. And we have, speaking for Irvine Valley College, we have co-chairs Professor Lisa Davis Allen, the academic senate president, and we have Kathleen Worley, the dean of academic programs. Speaking for Saddleback College will be Professor Bob Cosgrove, and he is the president-elect of the academic senate at Saddleback College, and Don Boucher, the vice president for instruction here. I have the first slide, just talking a little bit about some background. It's been a long journey, and as the chancellor mentioned about the strategic planning, it's also true about the accreditation process. Beginning back in August of 2010 was the time that we submitted our self-study reports to the ACCJC, the accrediting commission. In October 2010, the teams came and visited both colleges and the district services. And by January, that unfortunate day in 2011, the ACCJC placed both colleges on warning status. Well, that triggered really an amazing event, one that I have never experienced here in this district, and that is paying strict attention to what was being asked of us, pulling together both colleges and the district services, and putting committees together, and sitting down and really getting this hard work done in a very, very short period of time. And for that, we owe debt of gratitude to our chancellor, Gary Portner, for leading that effort. Then, we are asked to prepare now the recommendations and prepare this follow-up report that you're going to be hearing about. And of course, tonight, the final item up on the slide, the colleges will present those follow-up reports. So, I'll hand it off to Todd.
Thank you, Dr. Rockmore. Well, I'm very pleased to be able to report to the board and to the public about the very effective district-wide effort that was put together to respond to the ACCJC and putting together our follow-up report. First, would like to let you know, Dr. Rockmore had mentioned that a wonderful effort that our chancellor led. One of the things he started with is he put together immediately a district-wide accreditation steering committee that was comprised, not only led by him, but comprised of people of district services in both colleges. In fact, there were 12 people from district services, nine people from Saddleback College, and eight people from Irvine College. And that included all the key administrators and managers, but more importantly, I shouldn't have said "more importantly," sorry to all my peers and colleagues, but more importantly, we had representatives from our governance groups. Our academic senate, classified senates, were very much represented. The district at the time in that steering committee created actually six district recommendation task forces, which each of them dealt with the six recommendations, which you've heard about and you'll hear more about in a few minutes. In total, about 49 people served on each of those task forces to put together the work that was created to respond to each of those recommendations. It was a highly collaborative process. We had input from all the district-wide committees and college accreditation steering committees, which were used to not only do all the work, but also to develop the first draft of the follow-up report. Also, a draft, a copy of each of the report from each college was presented to each college's community, as well as the various district-wide accreditation steering committee and the district-wide recommendation task forces. Both colleges sent out the follow-up report drafts to everybody and all employees and the community for their input, and as well was posted on our websites for additional input and for information. The feedback was solicited, and suggestions were incorporated and taken into the writing of the follow-up reports that were handed in for you tonight. And members of both Saddleback and the IVC steering committees met on a regular basis, compared the drafts to make sure that a lot of the stuff, because it was dealing with district recommendations, was consistent and accurately presented, which you'll notice that as well. Overall, I have to tell you, it was an extremely successful effort at both colleges in collaboration with district services, and would also like to take my opportunity to thank the chancellor, thank President Rockmore, and once again, all the people that worked on these drafts. And I'm very pleased, next, to introduce our vice president of instruction, also our accreditation liaison officer and co-chair of the college steering committee, Dr. Don Boucher.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to speak to you briefly about the process that Saddleback College used to prepare its follow-up report. In addition to the district-wide steering committee that Dr. Burnett mentioned, we had a college accreditation steering committee made up of 11 members. We met bi-weekly and covered all of the topics and work that we needed to do. We had two primary draft writers for the follow-up report. The writers would then submit their drafts to our college accreditation follow-up steering committee. We reviewed them and revised them accordingly. Finally, the follow-up reviews were reviewed by the college and eventually approved by the college consultation council. Next, the report that you have is followed, it's presented in a prescribed manner. The ACCJC asks us to follow a certain report format. That consists of a statement of the report preparation, and then each of the six recommendations that Saddleback College received are listed. We break those down by recommendation and indicate the self-study report findings that we have, followed by the visiting team evaluation report and recommendation that led to the district recommendations that we have. Finally, we have the task force that Dr. Burnett mentioned, and the task force took certain actions, which are reported in our report. We evaluated the work that was done. We have planning agendas following each of the appropriate sections. The planning agendas are basically work that we need to continue to do or work that needs to be done in order to complete the process that we've had. And then finally, we have the evidence that substantiates the work that we've done and the findings that we have. Thank you.
Good evening. If you'll be so kind as to bear with me, I'm literally doing this with one hand tied behind my back, so... I would like to report as well, similarly to Saddleback College's efforts, that the IVC process was similar. We had eight-member college accreditation steering committee and 11 members that were participating from our college in representation for the district-wide steering committee. We also as well had two primary writers that drafted the follow-up report in response to the January 2011 letter from the ACCJC, myself and Dean Kathy Worley. We then produced the follow-up report that was presented to the college and the district services during the fall in-service, or as we like to call it, the flex week. And then, it ultimately has moved through the college system and through the governance groups to get approved in the college council. Thank God I'm left-handed. Or we might be here all night. The IVC follow-up report was similar to that of Saddleback College. We worked within the same criteria and the same requests of the ACCJC. So, as well, we addressed the six district recommendations, which we'll go through shortly. But in addition, unlike Saddleback College, IVC also had one college recommendation titled Recommendation Number Six, that they also asked us to address, which Dean Worley will mention later in this report. We need to go forward. District Recommendation One. The teams recommend that the chancellor develop and implement both a strategic short-term and long-term plan that is inclusive of the planning at the colleges, and that this planning structure drive the allocation of district resources for the colleges, ATAP, and the district. With that in mind, the task force process and actions were as followed in response. There was, since the reception of the letter and the work that began, we have produced an educational facilities master plan that is derived out of the two facilities and educational master plans of the college. The district-wide strategic plan, which you heard about, I believe, at the last board meeting, but will continue to hear about in detail. The administrative unit reviews at the district level, or the AURs, of all district service units will now be reviewing on a regularized basis. And the district planning and decision-making manual also was produced, and is in the process of moving through the drafts for finalization. As well, the IVC planning agendas, rather than go through each and every one, just to let you know that at IVC, inside the planning agendas, we do continue not only to participate, but to take a look at the district services and do what we can to continue to help review, modify, update, and revise as we see needed for the best effect at both district services and both of the colleges. We also will be involved in continuing to put forth in the development of a concrete three-to-five-year site development plan for ATAP.
Bob Cosgrove here, Saddleback College. The Saddleback planning agendas are essentially saying on this particular recommendation that ACCJC said, "You guys aren't doing the business the right way." And so, what this recommendation has done, along with recommendation two on our budgetary issues, was to allow us to bring together the two colleges and district services and view ourselves much differently than we had before. And the planning and decision-making manual is certainly one of the documents that will guide this district into the future and be revised as we go along and make changes. Recommendation Two. The teams saw that the college had developed, both colleges developed a resource allocation model, and we refer to that as DRAC, and that is visibly transparent, but the district itself in the area was less effective, at least less open. And we have had, over the years, quite a number of discussions regarding this particular issue, and I think we have now brought it to a resolution that it will be clearer and much more effective in the future, and a lot easier to understand for the board and for the colleges. Task Force Progress Actions, the district, thank you, District Resource Allocation Process Flow Chart, which is on a single page and easy to see and understand, and also the Development of Board Policy 3110, along with an administrative regulation related to the outline of what basic aid is and how it will be allocated in this district until it is revised at some future time. Saddleback Planning Agenda. We have clear links now to the planning procedures and a regular review by the board and the BPAR committee to recognize again that we have to be vigilant and make certain that we have transparency and that all parties are participating to make this the best college
IVC planning agendas were similar. We widely, are interested in widely disseminating and communicating the district resource allocation process, and will continue to work with the district on that. We also will be evaluating the effectiveness of the allocation process on an annual review and revise when appropriate and necessary. In addition, IVC is in the process currently of adopting and implementing TrackD, which will allow us not only to work through our program reviews and our student learning outcomes, our administrative outcomes, as well as our student services outcomes, but it will also, shortly, also allow us to directly tie it to the budget, which will be helpful for our college process. And then finally, to create and implement district-wide plan that is related to capital improvement, as well as scheduled technology and maintenance. That takes us then to District Recommendation Three. The teams recommend that the college, district administrators, faculty, and staff develop a communications process among the entities on key issues of district-wide concern, and they ask us specifically to include our concerns over the academic calendar, planning, ATAP, technology, and building priorities. Addressing that, the task force for District Recommendation Number Three followed through with a number of actions. They first are going to be creating and have, in a large part, already completed that creation of the internet site built on SharePoint that allows for all district committees to post and hopefully, through access on both colleges and the district level, be able to access this information and have greater communication. Standardized templates for agendas and minutes hopefully will also improve communication throughout the district at both institutional campuses and at district services, so that we're all kind of on the same page and speaking the same language as we organize what's happened and the work that we do as we report through the committees and task forces. The standards of communication as well attached to that, and the chancellor's newsletter, which we look forward to, and twice-a-year forums at both of the colleges. The IVC planning agendas, we have a number of them. A few of them here that are posted are that we will support district-wide goal number one, which calls for the district-wide meetings to be split between the two college locations. So, we're going both directions on the 405. And to invite the district administrators and staff to participate in Irvine Valley College brown bag sessions, forums, and workshops. Don?
The Saddleback College planning agendas for that recommendation three are very similar. We plan to institutionalize the practice of improving the communication process. We also plan to work with the employees at the college and the district services to ensure that we continue to collaborate, as we have done on this process as well. Recommendation Four. Recommendation Four is one in which you had a great hand, and that deals with the, to communicate the board of trustees' self-evaluation results. The process and actions resulting from that was a revised board of trustees' self-evaluation process. We now feel that we have a greater awareness on the part of the board of trustees, that the perceptions of the employees within the district are important. And finally, I think tonight's indicative of the fact that the board is very dedicated to education and student success as a priority. The Saddleback College planning agendas for Recommendation Four. The chancellor, district director of public affairs, and the college presidents will ensure that all employees are kept apprised of the actions. The chancellor will also evaluate the process for the future to be sure that we are following the recommendation as we have tried to address. the recommendation as we have tried to address.
The IVC planning agendas are very similar. The college and chancellor will keep us informed of progress as it occurs, and that the campus and its employees will participate constructively in the annual board evaluation process that occurs each spring. District Recommendation Five is that the Board of Trustees develop a clearly defined policy for a code of ethics, which must include dealing with violations should they occur. The process of revision took place among the board with the BPAR, the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Committee participating. The policy was updated, and one of the things that came out of this process was the idea of having greater civility within the district, but also mutual respect and civility at the board meetings.
Bob Beck. Recommendation Six, dispropose a clear delineation of its function responsibilities and district-level process for decision-making and the role of district and college planning and decision-making, and that they should review periodically the progress that has been made and look for ways of improving that as we go along. Clearly, the SharePoint is one of the most effective devices that we have, and as that continues to gain widespread use and we continue to make full use of it, I think we will have very effective communication available on the campuses and at the district services. Task Force Action involves revised function map, which very clearly spells out, at least at this point, how the college and the district service operates together and with our sister institution and ATEP. One of the things that I think is particularly helpful here is to recognize again how many people pitched in, but on the particular area of the function map, certainly like to recognize the vice chancellor and to recognize Randy Peebles for his work on the area of the manual itself and all the research that went into it. The process of actions, implementation of annual self-evaluation for all district-wide committees, something we haven't done, and standardized templates for committee minutes that make all decisions. And here, David Buggay was very helpful in organizing and bringing that material together. And directions how the committees should function in relation to decision-making, a consensus model, which we've had here in different ways, but certainly now more universally recognized and appreciated. Saddleback Planning Agendas, there are a few things that we cited here. To continue the work of making certain that documents flow between and among the constituent groups in the district, and to regularly update the planning and decision-making manual, and to also, thank you, regularly review the district-wide committee structure to determine if all existing committees are still relevant and making changes needed. When I was head of president a number of years ago, I cited, "Take a look at all the committees we had just at Saddleback," and we something had 158, and about 30% of them reported to nobody that it was met. And that certainly is a dysfunctional kind of business to run, and I think what we're doing here is making certain the business does run smoothly and that we do review it, and that we make certain that taxpayers are getting the money that they're putting up for us.
Unless you think we missed a slide, IVC didn't have any planning agendas on this one. IVC did have a college recommendation to address issues, collegial working relationship with the chancellor, with the Board of Trustees, with leadership at district office. The team that visited us noted that there had been progress made, but that this had been a 2004 recommendation that they felt was not fully met, which is why we need to respond to it at this time instead of at the midterm report. The process for this was to work with Saddleback College, work with the employees. The entire accreditation follow-up process caused us to reevaluate relationships and how we work with others. In addition, Dr. Rockmore has initiated a civility initiative at IVC. In fact, I'm reading a book on that currently. The president is attending constituency groups, group meetings in person so that questions could be answered and any kind of issues can be freely discussed. We've had workshops for both classified staff, and there's one coming up in October for managers. And college-wide discussion boards have been initiated so that people have a safe forum for posting information, asking questions, just communicating in a public way so that there's strong transparency and visibility of communication. Our planning agendas on this are to create a policy on mutual respect. We're going to be having another district-wide climate survey administered, and that will give us some feedback on how well we're doing in collaborating, effectiveness of services and planning. And again, we're going to implement the IVC initiative on civility. Our next steps are to submit the report, and I believe both colleges brought their pages of certification for signature tonight. We figured we'd strike while the iron was hot and we had you assembled. And in November, we anticipate a site team visit. This will be an abbreviated team, typically the president and associate from the two teams that were here before, and they will be coming and spending time with the district services. So we will let you know as soon as we get dates for that that are anticipated, but we have not been notified yet when they will be coming specifically. In January, the ACCJC board will meet again, and they'll decide we're off the hook or we need to stay on warning. And given everything that I've read, everything I've participated in, everything that I've observed, I honestly believe that we will go off warning at this time, and it's our most sincere hope that they tell us we don't have anything else to do until the midterm reports two years from now. We'll be notified in February. We do have the option of sending a team up to the meeting in January when ACCJC meets, but it is not required by any imagination.
Okay, thank you very much for a great report. Do we have any questions from board members? Seeing none, I guess you did too good a job.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. We are now on item 6.1, which is the development of a district-wide strategic plan, and quite related to what we just heard. So I'll let the chancellor present this item.
This is an item that the board heard is an information piece at the last meeting. So there's very little difference, but I do want to point one thing out. On page 13, under goal objective number 1.3.1, and this is a result of a recommendation that came out of IVC during the period of time that we were receiving additional input. And they thought that there should be a recognition in the plan that it's possible that we might want to move district services off-site of Saddleback College and put it somewhere in the middle between the two colleges, which has been a goal of the district for many, many years, and that in this economy, it might be that this is exactly the time that we should acquire another facility. The way that it's written in the plan, there is no definite time that it be done, rather that it be studied. In the Saddleback, let's see, in their facility plan, in their educational facility plan, has in there a future objective to move, to move into the third floor of the Health Sciences Building. And I'm not exactly sure what they have in mind, whether it be offices or classrooms, but if that, in order for that to happen, we have to be gone. And so this is just an addition to the planning agenda that it be considered and thought about in the meantime. Other than that, I think it's pretty close to what you saw before.
All right, and does this take an action? All right, so I would entertain a motion. Is anyone?
I move to accept the district-wide strategic plan.
All right, moved by trustee Pendergast.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Jay. Let's vote. I don't see anyone wishing to speak, so let's vote. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one absent trustee and student advisory, yes, vote. We're now at 6.2. And this is that chancellor recommends the Board of Trustees approve the transfer of $20 million cash from the capital outlay fund to the general fund, with the understanding the funds will be repaid in January after the initial property tax payments have been received. Chancellor, would you like to explain what this is all about? It's a lot of money.
Some of.
Okay, trustee Jay. Go ahead.
I think that we've done this a number of years. It's a cash flow matter.
Okay.
The majority of the money that this district receives comes from property taxes, and the first payment doesn't come until December. And so often, we have a cash flow issue, so this is just borrowing money from ourselves until the tax receipts come in.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Jay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Milchekar, and seeing no one wishing to speak, let's vote the item. Item carries unanimously with one absent vote, or one absent and one student advisory vote. 6.3, this is acceptance of a motion, or excuse me, acceptance of a grant from the National Science Foundation and the National Center for Rapid Prototyping and Additive Manufacturing Technologies. Chancellor, would you like to present this item? Or would you prefer that President Todd Burnett present this? Okay.
Well, as you know, we've had a, we've had this grant for many years, and it just got renewed. I might add, and David Buggay would, Chancellor Buggay would love to say that, that if you recall, we do not, we had to put that notice in for layoffs.
Yes.
Because this grant didn't come through. Well, the grant came through.
Great.
So just to let you know that we did not have to do what we did not want to do, or any of us, so.
Right.
But with that, it just continues our NSF grant for our rapid tech program.
Move approval. All right, moved by trustee Milchekar, seconded by trustee Meldau. No one wishing to speak? Let's vote the item. Okay, I voted. Okay. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory, yes, vote. 6.4, this is an item for approval of change order on the Irvine Valley College Life Science Building. Move approval. Okay, moved by trustee Milchekar, is seconded by trustee Lang. And let's see, President Rockmore, would you like to present this?
It is under the IVC title, but this is an order of business that's handled by the district services.
Okay, so Dr. Fitzsimmons.
As you noticed, that this is a deductive change order in the amount of decrease to the project cost of $23,198, so I recommend approval.
Great, we always like those. Okay. All right, do we have this move, we have motion and second. Let's vote the item, please. All right, carries unanimously with one trustee absent and student advisory, yes. 6.5, this is several policy revisions for approval this time. So I'll let the chancellor present this.
Yes, these policies have been to the board previously for review. The last one on here, which is board policy, new number 110, Code of Ethics Standards of Practice for the Board of Trustees, is one that you've just heard about. That's one of the activities we're working on to meet accreditation standards, and we would recommend that the board approve these. I know we have one trustee that has a comments to make.
Okay, move approval. All right, moved by trustee Milchekar, and seconded by trustee Meldau. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I just had a couple of really wordsmithing changes, I guess, that I did.
On which one, which policy?
This is on the Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics.
Policy, which is Exhibit H. And specifically, the changes that I was recommending would be on pages three and four of four. The first one I had was in item number 10 on page three of four. I was suggesting that under 10A, to read as follows, respectfully working with other board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation, and according each member courteous consideration of his or her opinion. B was fine. C just.
Could I just have you stop? So the one change in A is change the D to an A.
And instead of giving, I thought according was a little bit better.
Oh, according, okay.
Rather than giving. Could be a better word than that, I suppose.
According or according?
According, according.
According, correct? A-C-C-O-R-D-I-N-G. Let's be specific.
Yes, okay. And then in C, instead of work, to make it parallel with the other items, working with board members in a spirit of respect and civility in spite of the differences of opinion that may arise during vigorous debates of, and I would insert the word various points of view. So change work to working and insert the word various in front of points of view. So I would offer those changes to item 10. And then on item 11, the next page in C, again, for purposes of just being consistent, starting C out with the word being instead of be. And again, D to, impersonalize D to read as follows, remembering at all times that as an individual, that that an individual trustee has no legal authority outside the meetings of the board and should conduct their relationships with district staff, students, local citizenry, and the media on that basis.
Okay, you need to be, I think, a little more specific on that one. I understand the spirit of it, but we, if we're going to vote, I need to have specifics. So let's go through G.
Sure, you want me to reread that again?
Well, tell me what you're going to strike and what you're going to insert. That's what I want to know.
Sure.
I want you to read it.
Okay. You do or don't want me to read?
I don't want you to read it.
Okay.
Just where are you going to strike something?
Remembering instead of remember.
Which number?
Remembering instead of remember.
Correct.
Go ahead, next.
After the word individual, inserting the words trustee has instead of I have.
So strike I have and insert trustee has.
Correct.
Next.
And instead of the word conduct, change that to conducting there instead of my.
So we're going to strike conduct and my and insert conducting there.
Conducting there, yes, thank you. Those would be the changes that I would recommend.
I agree with those changes.
Will you wait to be recognized, trustee Milchekar? Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so there's been a motion by trustee Milchekar, I believe, and seconded by trustee Meldau. Do you agree with those changes?
I agree with the changes because they're mainly grammar and.
Right, yes. I didn't know that he had a degree in English, but it's okay. So let me just ask.
We're an educational institution.
Yes, we are.
And syntax echoes that carries through the entire.
Yeah, I don't think it really changes the meaning of anything, just maybe clears it up.
Correct.
So trustee Pendergast, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, first, I think trustee Meldau has to agree as well.
Did you approve it? I think he said he did, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing is I would, I would make sure we look up and make sure we're using the right word on number 10.
Where, which word?
10A. He was striking giving and changing it to according.
Yeah, and I'd be fine to substitute another word there.
I think the correct term is affording, but I may be incorrect. Just if somebody could look that up before we put it in.
Well, if you want to make that as a change, he has no problem with it, so why don't we just go ahead?
I'm not sure.
I think it makes more sense, frankly, to say affording rather than according, so I, if we can just go ahead and get this done. Now, let me just ask the chancellor, do these need to go back for review with any of the constituencies?
No, I don't think so. There's no change in the meaning of the policy. I don't think it needs to go back.
All right, so with that minor change suggested by trustee Pendergast and the ones by trustee Lang, you accept that? And we're ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, let's vote. All right, so we're voting on the entire package of all of these with the changes that are suggested on the Code of Ethics. So it carries unanimously with one absent and one student advisory, yes. Everybody understand what they voted on? Very good, thank you. We are now at 6.6. We are now at 6.6. And these are Board Policies that are for review and study. And the Chancellor recommends the Board of Trustees accept for review and study these Exhibits A through C. Any comments or questions? This doesn't really take an action, or does it? Do we need to vote on this? I guess we probably do.
Substance for review and study, but I do have a.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. I had a question regarding possibly suggested changes on Exhibit C, which is Board Policy 2100, that has to do with, I guess principally really, Item 3, or Number 3. This delegation of authority policy would enable the Chancellor to sign applications for funds and contracts for the district, subject to ratification by the Board. The concern I have is that we've got a separate policy that speaks to dollar limitations and so forth for those items that would come directly to the Board for approval versus those items that can be decided upon and then later be ratified by the Board. I think this item is intended to cover those emergencies when we perhaps are in between Board meetings. The Chancellor needs to take action. It's impractical to convene a special meeting of the Board. And so I would just offer that perhaps we need to insert the word emergency somewhere in there, you know, to make it clear that this isn't inconsistent with the other policy.
I believe we have a dollar amount policy that needs to come to the Board. Is that not true? Chancellor?
The policy we have is that the administration can sign contracts below $100,000 and then be brought back for ratification.
Okay.
What Number 3 is about is what do you do if it's over $100,000, but it's emergency? And you can't wait. What this policy does is to give the Chancellor the authority to sign a contract and then in those instances, and bring it back to the Board later. Now, over the time that I've been here, I think I've seen this done maybe two times. And the normal practice has been that the Chancellor discusses it with the Board President and gets concurrence, and then proceeds with the contract, and then brought back to the Board at the next meeting. And this Item Number 3, by the way, is not new. This was part of the previous policy. The substitution of emergency is fine with me. That's how it's used anyway.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion. We have a couple of trustees wishing to speak. Trustee Pendergast?
I just wanted to note that I think in our discussion last week that we had, it's important to note that this was basically from a template from the accreditation recommendation, and that it's simply kind of a rewording of the policy you already have in place for the Presidents. Is that correct?
The current existing policy is where, if you look on Page 1 of 2 at the bottom, where it says in accordance, everything from there on is the current policy.
Okay.
The above section, what that's about is that during the last couple of years for accreditation purposes, we've been very careful to redefine the delegation of authority of the President. And it makes it very clear that that authority is according to the standards of the Commission. But there wasn't any work done about what is the delegation of authority of the Chancellor. So the language that's here is almost word for word out of the accreditation standards.
Okay, Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, I wanted to echo Trustee Pendergast that we do have a delegation of authority now for both Presidents, and the accreditation requires us to have a delegation of authority for the Chancellor. So we discussed this in the Board Leadership Meeting, so it's a requirement now to do that. I wanted to also ask a question about honorary degrees, Number 6200.
Okay, excuse me, Trustee Melchiker, I know that our Vice Chancellor wants to talk about this particular item, so we'll come back to you after that.
Absolutely.
Dr. Fitzsimmons.
I just want to mention that if we just put in language that the Chancellor has authority in emergency situations, it might look, by reading the policy, the revised policy, then that's the only authority he has. So I think we need to put something in there, basically, that says that according to whatever the other policy is, he can sign, obviously, contracts under $100,000 and then for ratification and in emergency situations, or something like that.
Okay, well, that can be revised and then go back out, so. But we do have to vote on accepting these now. We want to go to Trustee Melchiker because she wants to talk about another policy that's in this packet. Go ahead.
Particularly, if it's a template, the last one.
Right.
We probably should follow the template language. But anyway, honorary degrees, it says here, "The Chancellor shall establish procedures and criteria for the award of honorary degrees." Shouldn't that be something that is discussed by the Board of Trustees? Is what is our criteria for honoring? And I'm asking the Chancellor this.
Yes, he's going to respond to you. He's ready.
Okay, thank you.
The language that the Chancellor shall develop in any policy is just standard language. What really happens is that the Board Policy Committee and the colleges all work together to develop, in this case, it'd be an administrative regulation to implement this policy. So all this really does is says to the Chancellor, "Make sure that this happens."
Oh, I see, okay.
So it doesn't mean that the Chancellor himself is going to sit in his office and write up what the regulation will be.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, any? Trustee Lang?
Oh, yes, I mean, it's fairly clear, I think, in the language of 6200 that, you know, honorary degrees has to be approved by the Board. I mean, that's the end of the second paragraph.
Right, it says approved by the Board.
So, I think we're covered there.
Okay, is, I don't see any other trustees wishing to speak. So do I have a motion on this, please?
Some move.
Trustee Pendergast, second?
A second to approve for review and study.
Review and study, that's all. That's all the recommendation is for. So we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on the item. Okay, carries unanimously with one absent trustee and one student advisory yes vote. 6.7. This is to adopt a resolution to rescind the classified layoff that was spoken about earlier since we got the grant.
Move approval.
All right, moved. Wait a minute, I can't keep up. All right, Trustee Melchiker moved it, and Trustee Lang seconded it. So anyone wishing to speak? If not, we'll vote on the item. Actually, it's a roll call because it's a resolution. I beg your pardon. So if we could ask our Grace Garcia to call the roll.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldau.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
All right, very good. That carries, and we have a resolution to circulate for signature, so thank you very much. 6.8. This is academic personnel actions, and Vice Chancellor Bougay will present this.
No changes.
No changes. Do I have a motion to?
No move.
Second by Trustee Jay and seconded by Trustee Melchiker. So let's vote on the item, seeing no one wishing to speak. Okay. Pushed my button, there we go. And Trustee Melchiker, you need to vote.
Oh, I thought he did.
All right, carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. 6.9. This is classified personnel actions. No changes. Do I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Trustee Melchiker moved.
Yes.
Second by Trustee Lang. No one wishing to speak? We'll vote on the item. Okay. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory vote, yes. All right, 7.1. Now, this is 2012 Teacher of the Year Recognition Ceremony. So Chancellor, would you want to present this?
This is noticed to the Board of the ceremony that will be held, I think at the Disneyland Hotel, yes?
Right, November 1st.
On November 1st, and the nominee that's being honored from our district, you already saw once tonight and had a resolution for her recognizing her outstanding work. And so just if Board members would like to attend.
Two, actually, that we saw tonight. One from IVC and one from Saddleback.
Yes.
Right.
Correct. So if there's trustees who would like to attend, they should just let me know that you'd like to do so.
Very good. It's a wonderful ceremony. What time? It's usually in the evening. I'm not sure exactly. 6, yeah, yeah. It's a very nice event, so I encourage you to go.
It's a long evening, but I encourage you to go.
All right, these are not action items, these are reports. So the next one is Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College Reassigned Time Stipends. Any comments or questions? It's an information item only. Okay.
Real quick.
Yes, Trustee Pendergast?
If we do want to go to that, do we let Grace know, or do we?
Let Grace know or the Chancellor, yes, uh huh. Okay, so now we're back to 7.3, and this is another information item, and it's speakers for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. Any comments or questions about this report? Seeing none, we're at 7.4, the Basic Aid Report. Comments or questions? 7.5 is the Facilities Plan Status Report. We have Randy here to answer any questions? No? Okay. 7.6, the Monthly Financial Status Report. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. We are now at our reports from our constituency groups, so we will start with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Dan Walsh, Saddleback College.
Thank you.
Saddleback College Academic Senate President. We just finished identifying our full-time faculty replacement positions as a result of the significant retirements last year. And as we know, it's full-time faculty are at the root of student success. It's also what I call the curriculum season. It's a busy time of year with curriculum updates and changes. We're also preparing an informational item to present to the Board at an upcoming meeting on the process. And that's it for us.
Thank you. Faculty Association, Mr. Long?
Faculty Association has no report this evening.
Wow, okay. And we're IVC Academic Senate?
IVC Academic Senate has no formal report. I would only, on behalf of the IVC Academic Senate, like to echo congratulations to Kay and Richard and David for doing the great work of teaching inside the classroom. As we all know, ultimately, that's why every one of us are here tonight, so.
Exactly, yes. Well said. All right, and our Associate Vice Chancellor, Economic Development, ATEP, Randy Peoples.
Thank you. Good evening and no report. Thank you.
Okay, very good. President Rockmore, Irvine Valley College.
Yes, I'd also like to congratulate all of our Faculty of the Year. Absolutely wonderful opportunity there. I, soon you're going to be hearing about student success. We'll have a discussion coming to you. And one thing that we will mention is an honor student program that has been put together for student success, and it's called CONNECT. And it's an acronym for Coaching of Novices Now Experiencing College Transition.
What's that?
And this is based on a study that they did that shows that students who are connected to the campus actually show or achieve greater academic success. This is a very, very dynamic program that was put together entirely by students for student success, and they have already published in the Journal of the American Psychological Association, and are on the road giving presentations in other places as well. So if you get the opportunity to hear them, it's really phenomenal. I had the opportunity to attend the distinguished lecture series, which is put together by our Academic Senate and our associated students. This time, it was by Professor Robert Young. He's a professor of geography and urban planning at California State University Fullerton. And he spoke on Paradise at Middle Age, Exploring the Real Orange. And it had nothing to do with what you're thinking about, I'm sure. But it was an exploration of Orange County from a geographical urban development perspective. And so it went back when Irvine was first developed, it focused on Irvine, and showed the change in communities and building designs and how people live, and now in more of a middle-aged type city and what it looks like. It was very fascinating. I didn't get a chance to attend IVC to IVC faculty lecture, and it's named that because it's our own speaking to our own, and it's put together, again, by our Academic Senate. But it was by Dr. Stan Breckenridge, who I've had a long relationship with and enjoy him very much. He's from the IVC Department of Music. And he discussed from slavery to civil rights, resilience and perseverance, past and present, of African-American culture, musicological inquiries through song and performance practice. He's a wonderful musician himself. And so I'm sorry to miss that one. Hopefully, I can catch that next time. Finally, I would like to thank everyone for attending the 9/11 ceremonies, and President Patberg for giving the comments for the Board. It was much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Saddleback College President, Todd Berman.
Thank you, Madam President. First, we've talked a lot about accreditation tonight, thanked a lot of people. I would like to thank three people at Saddleback College that have made extraordinary efforts and work on our report at Saddleback College. First is the two co-chairs, Professor Bob Cosgrove and Don Boucher, our Vice President of Instruction. And finally, somebody you've heard a lot about, but she wasn't here tonight, but she's done an amazing amount of work on it, and particularly the writing, and that's Professor Claire Cesaro Silva. So thanks to the three of you. And obviously, once again, to our governance groups who did a wonderful job. Thank you all very much for homecoming. Four trustees, two former Presidents, the Chancellor, wow, we almost had a grand slab of attendance. So I want to thank you all very much for that. The team appreciates it, the alumni appreciate it, and I certainly appreciate it. So thank you very much. I hope you had a good time. I had on Friday, actually, and thank you, our President Nancy Patberg, who attended the annual State of the College Community Breakfast. And I have a copy of it for all of you out there on the desk for you to see. That was another phenomenally successful community event we had. We had a, I guess it's a good time of the year to do it when the legislature's out of session, because we actually had some Assemblywoman Diane Harkey was there, as well as many other representatives, elected officials in our community. So we're very thrilled. But I encourage you to read that, and we'll tell you a lot about what happened last year and what's going on in the coming year. Finally, on your desk, we have given out to you the annual 2011 wall, and as well as there's a lairate article on the wall as well that we attached to it. For those of you that don't know, it's the annual Student Produced Magazine, which is for short stories, poetry, and other types of written works. And the article, of course, is written by a student and the lairate as well. Anyway, that's my report.
Well, and you did miss that at your State of the College, you had two college trustees from other community college districts.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
From two other community college districts.
Yes, from Pasadena City College and Long Beach City College.
Right.
Coming down to find out what's going on at Saddleback.
Yeah, I guess we're scaring them. Okay. Vice Chancellor Bermucy, Vice Chancellor of Technology. Okay, very good. And Vice Chancellor Bougay?
It's very good to be in a district that still remembers 9/11 ceremonies, that is not common across the state, so it's very good the Presidents make that a high priority for theirs. The other part, too, is accreditation has been a sprint since January of actually running through, and it's amazing that accreditation is becoming a unifying factor in the district rather than divisive one. Tonight, it was a most amazing slide presentation to see slides that had red on one side of the top margin and blue on the other. I was fascinated by that. That was wonderful. Thank you, Presidents and the leaders of accreditation teams.
Very well said, exactly. Vice Chancellor Business Services, Deborah Fitzsimmons.
Yes, the last several weeks, we've had the auditors here for their final audit work, and their onsite work should be finished up this week. We are tentatively scheduling the Audit Committee of the Board to meet with the auditors for the exit interview prior to the November 16 close session at 4:00 p.m. That's tentative until we get that confirmed. Beth Mueller, our Director of Fiscal Services at the district, has planned four informational workshops to be held at the colleges in September and October, two at each college. And these workshops are called the District Road Show. We already held one last Friday morning, all morning, at IVC, and was very well received. All the district departments, district services departments are participating, and it's really been informative, and the concept for it is to make sure that we could provide better it is to make sure that we could provide better customer service. We can ask, give opportunities for the different folks who are participating to ask questions and to provide comments and recommendations to us that we can entertain and try to improve our services. Thank you.
Very good. And vice, our president of IVC's Classified Senate, Dennis Gordon.
Thank you. I just want to report that our recent meeting, we had a presentation of the accreditation follow-up that we saw tonight. And I want to personally thank Kathy Worley for coming to our meeting and presenting that. Thank you.
Great. And our CSEA Classified Senate president?
Past president.
Past president.
Russ Hamilton, I'm Classified Senate president, past president at Saddleback.
Okay.
No report tonight.
Okay, very good. And I'm sorry, there we go. Well, I'm, I'm looking, I can't, your print is too small for me to read. Okay. I'm sorry, G. Dixon, CSEA president. Go ahead. All right, very good. And I do believe we have something from trustee Pendergast.
I'd like to move to adjourn tonight in memorance of IVC student Brett Colin Bursch, who died on September 18th after suffering injuries on his skateboard. And we'd just like to, you know--
Have a second?
Offer our condolences to his family.
All right. I think that we don't need a second, and everyone would certainly agree with that. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.